Welcome one, welcome all. Welcome to our workshop today. And Mr. Duhany, I understand that we have a few briefings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first item will be on the Cavalier Lawn Green Space easement. And basically, this item came to you after constituents reached out to the council in my office regarding construction work on the Cavalier Lawn. Staff looked into the work that was occurring and realized that the work was not permitted, and subsequently issued a stop work order. The first stop work order was not initially adhered to by the contractor. A second stop work order was issued that was adhered to by the contractor. I then sent council a letter letting them know that we will be investigating the matter to determine if the view would be impermissibly impacted or the historic registries would be threatened. At the request of Councilmember Moss, we're briefing council on what actions staff has recommended and the process used to get there, so the council can weigh in as to whether it is sufficient or if staff should add additional processes or enact additional conditions on the developer.
Welcome Bobby.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and City Manager Duhany. Thank you. We apologize for providing an updated slide and deck for you. You do have that at your seats. We had a little bit of additional information that we ran into yesterday regarding some of the improvements and work being done at the Cavalier. And we updated the presentation to reflect that information. Nope. Nope, that's not... Can you just forward? Can you go to the next slide, Chris? That's fine, thank you.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you. I gotta go out. You know, when something works, it works.
Apologize, Mayor, members of council, the little bit of a technical difficulty here. But if you want to follow along in the slides that were provided to you at your seats, and we'll catch up as everything gets loaded back up. So just a summary of the presentation. As you know, the city of Virginia Beach holds a green space easement for the Cavalier Hotel and Lawn area and entrance area. And the easement requires that the property owner request approval for any material or permanent changes to that lawn area, which may affect the view shed to the historic hotel, as well as impact any of the green space areas that we have the easement over top of. The contractor for the hotel initiated work without first requesting city approval, which also includes permits. And we'll go through the order of events that occurred, and as well as the city issuing a stop work order for the work. A request was then subsequently submitted for approval after the fact, and then city staff and a committee reviewed the proposal after the fact and recommended approval to the city manager with conditions for the proposed improvements. So just some background, in 2013, the city did purchase a green space easement to preserve the iconic Cavalier Hotel and Lawn entrance where you note where it says Cavalier at the front of the, in that landscape area. That area had to be preserved. That's what the key point of that easement, as well as any view sheds towards the existing historic building from Atlantic Pacific Avenue where it transitions. In 2014, the hotel was listed on the Virginia Landmarks Registry, as well as the National Register of Historic Places. And in 2018, the majority of the rehabilitation of the Cavalier was completed and the Cavalier Hotel reopened to the public. I'm going to frame this, and you'll see this slide again as I hand it over to Mark Reed to go through the approval process for the easement, for the improvements that were requested in the easement. But as far as the primary consideration that is considered for any changes to that view shed easement, is the key that to maintain the green space and open space, and that it is substantially the same or similar to what it was when it was purchased at the effective date. One of the key determinations for that is if any of the improvements cause any material effect to the visibility of the building from Atlantic and Pacific Avenue, as I noted before, and also if any of the proposed improvements impact whether the building will be delisted from the national register. Those things all together, along with staff's review, is what's part of the review process for the easement. And Mark Reed will go over that in detail after I go through the timeline of the events. So as far as the events, as Manager Duhany noted, on February 15th, the city staff and the manager's office did receive a complaint regarding work that was being performed out at the Cavalier. It was received later that day, and on the following day, inspector went out to the site and issued a verbal stop work order. As typical as we would do as if there was a complaint or an issue that doesn't deal with a life safety matter, the inspector will go out and try to coerce compliance by the applicant or the person doing the work. That's very typical for what we do for anybody that does work outside of the bounds of a permit. They did issue, they verbally told them to stop work and come in and get a permit. The contractor, Taylor Construction, submitted online an application for the proposed improvements for a catering area on February 18th. Now, on February 19th, just to follow up on the site, an inspector does another site visit and notes that there's additional work, and then when a formal stop work order notice was posted on the property. You can see what the work that was performed. Many of this was done at the beginning, that we noticed, and we issued the verbal stop record order. Then, as they continued to do installation, we issued the formal stop work order, which you can see posted on the property. It is outdoor catering area for what they typically have used on the Cavalier Lawn, which they would set up under a tent, where they wanted something more permanent at this location, which is to the side of the, not directly in front of the building where this catering area is located. On February 24th, there was a third site inspection noting that additional work had been completed, which include removing turf area, which was directly in front of the Cavalier entrances. For the picture, that's on the top of the slide. It's an area that's to the left, directly in front of the doorway. That additional work, another stop work order was posted to note, to tell them to stop their work, because it does require approval for compliance with the easement, as well as necessary permits, including potential site plan and building permits. On February 26th, the contractor was notified of the land disturbance that they performed, so they removed the turf from the area, which was typically, they used it for their events, and it was already usually a muddy area or a location which tend to get trampled on pretty regularly, and they had removed the turf from that area, which is a potential erosion and sediment control violation. We did note and tell them that they did need a field change to their open site plan permits that they have, in order to account for the proposed changes that they have, as well as reminding them that they do need approval for compliance with the green space easement that the city holds on the property. On February 27th, the contractor installed silt fence on the property, which is required for the erosion and sediment control potential issues that were realized when they removed all the grass and denuded the area. This is the picture on February 25th of the site, where they'd removed the turf. On March 1st, unfortunately, again, staff inspects the site, and the contractor continues work pouring a footing, which you can see on the extents of this area. You can see the silt fence, which was installed, but the footing work was installed as well. Contractor then is notified in writing that any further work performed would result in a notice of violation and further legal action, which could potentially issue in a summons. Again, this process that we've had of continually going to the site and working with the contractor as they go through the permitting process and approval process, because this is not a life safety matter, is typical of this back and forth. Unfortunately, the contractor chose to continue to do work, and the notice of violation process is a bit cumbersome, and there's no quick remedy. By the time we may have issued a notice of violation, potentially summons them to court and get a court date for the issues, it could be potentially that the area could either be restored back to the way it was, which was with grass, or they could go through the permitting process or approval process for the green space easement and obtain all necessary permits. Because we felt that the site was stabilized, we didn't feel it necessary to push forward anymore, but we did note that we needed to stop the work as they continued to push forward. On March 12th, staff reviewed the application that was submitted for the proposed improvements in the green space easement that the city holds, and staff, and the committee of staff and member of the Historic Preservation Commission provided a recommendation to the city manager to approve the proposed improvements. On March 18th, and this is where we have additional information, which is why we updated the slides, so that we could keep the city council up to date, the permit for the catering area only was issued in error. What has happened is the site had other permits that were open, interior electrical permits, and we had locked the property in the permitting system. When we unlocked the property in the permitting system to allow them to final and close out those interior electrical permits, which were not a part of the green space easement, and we reapplied the hold that was in the system, we've come to realize that the hold in the system didn't work anymore. We had just done an upgrade to Acela, which is our permitting software, and it's an unfortunate time to find it when we had situational awareness to know that we should not be issuing a permit here. There is an internal communications issue that we need to resolve as far as making sure all the plan review staff and permitting staff are aware of. When there is a significant issue in a site that requires a significant review, that there needs to be more eyes on it to understand what the issues are. You can note, the permit was submitted on February 18th. On March 18th, which is our typical 30-day timeframe, this is when it came back around to the, into the plan reviewers queue for them to look at the plans. So the plans were sufficient, but they did not have the approval for the green space easement, and an unfortunate error of issuing the permit due to lack of communication, as well as the permitting software issues occurred. On March 22nd, the contractor came in and met with, actually virtually met with staff, with their engineer, and discussed the requirements for their field change to their existing site plan. They were reminded in that meeting with Development Services Center staff, permit staff, and as well as our historic planning staff, that they cannot do work, and they still require approval from the green space easement during that meeting on Monday. There was a comment during the meeting that the contractor thought he had a permit in hand, and staff went and reviewed that to check the system to see if a permit was issued, and that's when we noticed the permit was issued in error, and we revoked the permit in accordance with the building code. Again, this is information that came to us yesterday as we're going through the process of meeting with the engineer and contractor to try to resolve some of these issues, and we wanted to make sure that the city council had information and is aware of this up to date, as we are aware of it. You can see, as the building inspector went out to the site, typically when we see something and are noting any substantial work, we would be looking for something significant, as in they finished the covering over top of the catering area, or they installed the turf or did something else that would be easy for the eye to catch, that they did significant building work or structural work. And during the quick cursory inspection that they did the first time, they didn't see anything that turned on any signals for them to be aware of. But as you can see here, there are some brick facade that was installed on the split face block. You can see that the poles were painted, but nothing substantially was changed inside the catering area. However, from long distance seeing into the green area, you can see that it doesn't apparently show that there was any work, but you do see a trench that was installed to bring utilities, as we believe are utilities to bring to the catering area itself. When the inspector did go back out to the site, there was no one working on the site at that point in time. That was yesterday, as well as this morning, to verify that they have continued to stop. This is the up-to-date information we have as far as any of the work that is ongoing at the location. Again, the permit has been revoked, and staff is continuing to monitor the site to make sure there's no other issues. Going to the next slide, I will hand over to Mark Reed to discuss the criteria as far as reviewing the proposed improvements inside the Cavalier, on top of the green space easement for the Cavalier.
Welcome, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Pleasure to be here again. Just, I'm going to go over the process that city staff went through to review the request for work in the green space area that the city holds an easement on. Again, the criteria for consideration, does the proposed work maintain the green space and open space in substantially the same form as the effective date of the easement? That was, effective date was in 2013. Does it materially affect the visibility of the building from Atlantic Pacific Avenue? And does it compromise the listing of the building in the National Register of Historic Just to give you a little bit of detail on the improvements that were requested, as Mr. Tahan noted, the area up at the top of the lawn is utilized by the Cavalier Hotel for events and rentals, and this area, over the last couple of years, has, because of the foot traffic and the work of the caterer, has been a problem for them to maintain the turf. So they've replaced the turf several times at the beginning of the season, and then as the season goes on, the turf gets worn down and it becomes a muddy area. So they proposed to put in a catering prep area. That's there on the right, that shorter arrow points to it, the tan rectangle. So that's the constructed area that you saw in the photos, brick pavers, a wall around it bricked in. And then the other area is the front of the hotel there at the top of the lawn, they are proposing to put in artificial turf, that would then take care of the problem with the foot traffic. Just to give you a little more detail on the catering area, it's off the northeast corner of the hotel, on what currently had been a turf area. They're putting in a low four-foot tall brick wall around that area. It's approximately 17 feet by 21 feet. They'll cover it with a low awning covering, and they'll install some landscape screening. For the turf area, again, it's located there at the, right in front of the hotel, at the top of the lawn, and they are proposing this synthetic Rye 200, which is a high-quality product that's designed for high-traffic areas. As far as the review process that we went through, first, the request was received, as already noted, it was after the fact. Once they had gotten the initial stop work orders, they did then request the easement review. The first thing that we needed to do was determine the impact on state and national register status. That can only be made by the staff at the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, so we submitted materials to them for their review. And then, city staff convened a committee to review the proposal. Representatives included representative from the city attorney's office, Parks and Recreation, Landscape Management, Public Works, Facilities Management, Planning, Historic Preservation, and a representative from the Historic Preservation Commission. And reviewing all the information, the committee then made a recommendation to the city manager. So the opinion from Virginia Department of Historic Resources, they said that the catering staging area, as designed and landscaped in the plans that we submitted to them, will not have a significant impact on the visual character or historic integrity of the Cavalier Hotel or its setting. They also said that the proposed changes will not affect the eligibility of the Cavalier Hotel with regard to the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic So with that information in mind, and reviewing the criteria of the easement and the proposed work, the committee is recommending approval of the proposed improvements with the following conditions. One, all work to be permitted and inspected per city code. Two, no material changes to the plans once approved without prior city permission. Three, no material alterations or replacements to the proposed improvements once constructed without prior city permission. Four, the catering area to be used for that purpose only, not for other purposes, such as assembly, a dance floor, or any other use. Five, that cleaning and maintenance of the artificial turf must not adversely impact the remainder of the existing great lawn. They need to use bio-friendly materials in cleaning that, because everything's going to go downhill to the rest of the lawn. Catering area, and number six, catering area and artificial turf is to be maintained in good condition and repaired or replaced if damaged to match the proposed improvements. And finally, number seven, approval is conditional and will be revoked if in the future any additional permanent improvements are constructed or installed within the easement area without first having received all necessary prior approvals and required permits from the city, including permission as required by the easement. So to conclude, Cavalier Hotel initiated work in the green space easement prior to requesting city approval. They did request easement review after the fact, so city staff then initiated the review process. We contacted the state and the Department of Historic Resources, provided an opinion on the effect to historic setting and state and national register status. City staff then reviewed all the criteria specified in the easement, reviewed the request, and recommended approval to city manager with the seven conditions I just noted. So Mr. Tahan and I are ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Moss.
Can you do a slide quickly, please?
Pardon me?
Slide quickly, please. Slide quickly?
Yes. Who was the contractor for this work that failed to get the necessary approvals before starting work? Who was that contractor?
Scott Taylor.
And can you tell me, on whose direction did he decide to proceed to work on the site without the requisite requirements per the agreement that we have, independent of permitting?
That I don't know.
Did anyone in the course of the review ask the contractor why he decided on his own to initiate the work without being in compliance with the agreements that applied and without a permit?
During the review of the request, we did not engage the contractor in any discussion. It was purely to evaluate the request against the criteria of the easement.
Thank you. Given that the current agreement, that the owner of the corporate entity, and the corporate entity that's on the agreement, who is that?
I believe it's...
Who is the named person on the agreement for which the city has, they have an obligation to the city? Who is the...
I believe it's Cavalier Associates.
Right, thank you for the record, let that reflect that. So if they didn't, since that's a fairly sophisticated organization with professionals and lawyers, if they didn't comply with the agreement that was already in place, what makes the committee that reviewed this believe that the things that they already had to do, that they're now saying they're going to do, they will do in the future? What discussion did you have such that you believe that something that they didn't do before, that they were obligated and legally to do, that they're now going to do it at some other time? What made you draw that conclusion?
Are you referring to the seven conditions that we outlined?
Yes, some of which was to get advanced approval, which is in the current agreement. They didn't do it, so what makes you think that they're doing it in the future when they didn't do it in the past?
Well, condition number seven addresses that, sir. The revoke, revocation of the approval would allow the city to legally require them to remove all of these improvements and put the condition of the green space back as it was prior to that.
But we can do that today on the existing agreement, and I have that answer from the city attorney, so that's not additional guarantees, that's a guarantee members of this body we have today. Can you cite, or maybe it would be better for Mr. Tahan, since he owns this function, can he cite another case where we've had this substantial poured concrete, brick work, all without a permit, not in viol, not consistent with a legal document, that we've just like walked away and said, oh, it's okay, we'll just approve what you have and let go? I'd be interested to know what the precedent is. I know the Chesapeake Bay Act doesn't do that, board doesn't do that, so I'm interested why, and I have another question, but if you would please, Mr. Tahan, could educate me on when we've had a pattern of consistent working after being advised not to, that we have, I would say in effect, rewarded the contractor acting on behalf of Cavalier Associates, I assume, that we just have looked the other way and just said, okay, everything's great?
I do not have a specific additional instance, sir. I do know, and maybe our permits and inspection administrator, Scott Steen, can bring up other ones, where we do have other contractors or homeowners that obtain permits and continue to do work, and we try to work with them. The point between the stopping of work and the timeframe is, although not stellar, it was 15 days, which is, it's not the best, but we tried our best to have them stop. The other route that we could utilize was to issue, continue to issue a notice of violation and summons them to court, which is another option, but as I noted previously, we try to get compliance with all the requirements as we go through the process, so.
And in the course, this might be for Mr. Reed, in the course of this committee's discussion, since it's the taxpayers who spent $2 million plus out of the general fund revenues, not tip money, to purchase this scenic easement, is there some reason, because obviously in the terms of the agreement, I've also confirmed this with the city attorney, we could have asked for an adjustment and a partial rebate of our $2 million in consideration for their, I think you could say, flagrant movement to violate the terms of the agreement, which are severable from the permit issue? Did anyone raise the issue about the taxpayers' equity and for what we're granting them, which is in effect the ability to make additional cash and reduce their expenses under the current agreement, because you mentioned the turf building, that in fact, the public was due some consideration and a partial repayment of their $2 million for the scenic easement, since they were both reducing their expenses and expanding their ability to enable to earn more revenue? Did that ever come up?
We were aware of the city's significant investment in the easement, but I think we were looking at everything as objectively as we could, so whether it was an easement that had been donated to the city, or an easement that the city paid more than $2 million, we were going to review it based upon the criteria.
So no one gave any consideration to the public's equity and the entitlement they might have for compensation for reducing the expenses for Cavalier Associates and enabling them to earn more revenue as a consequence of their improvements?
Not during the discussion of our committee, no, sir.
Thank you very much. Can I have a question for Mr. City Manager, if I could?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, and first of all, I want to say thank you for how vigorously you followed up on the calls I had. I think the staff gave an excellent timeline, but I know in the past, we have denied people certain rezoning requests because they have violated and moved ahead of our approval, and we have turned them down from earning money on their property. So I'm, do you not think, and this is an opinion, if you don't want to offer one, I understand that, but it would seem to me that since we are, should be looking beyond just the, what I would call the compliance, but the contextual part of this, we spent a lot of money. This person should, having known what the obligations are, referring to Cavalier Associates, has an obligation to make sure that their contractors that they hire know that, so they have no excuse for not knowing they had to come back to us and get prior approval. This is not a small builder doing something in their backyard with a patio or building a shed. This is pretty substantial. So, and it enables them to earn more money and reduce their expenses, so do you not think that there's something to be said for if we're, based on all of this, and we don't want to certainly send a signal to other contractors, who I'm sure are watching this, that you can not just make a mistake, but you can have a flagrant violation and continuously have violations and get all that you want, but the public doesn't get anything in return from its $2 million investment? I'm, I have a hard time with that, but how do we get that attitude of that perspective of the taxpayers when they look at this, or other builders, and say, we're going to demand that people respect our laws? This is not just an error, this is a flagrant violation and then continuous behavior to do so. I'm interested in your perspective, if you want to offer it. If not, I have a couple of the questions I want to ask.
Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Moss, that was definitely one of the primary concerns when this came to our attention. You know, obviously, we took into account the, we took into account a couple of factors, and one of the key factors we took into account was the fact that the developer isn't getting instant right to do this right now. They still have to go through a long process to go, to get this approved and vetted, so if for some reason council is okay with the recommendation that we're presenting here today, the developer is not necessarily getting immediate approval to move forward with this work. They still have to get it vetted by storm waters, still have to get it by a whole host of other requirements to satisfy the permitting process as well. So the developer is technically not going to be happy with the delay in their ability to use this property in the way that they want it to. Probably, obviously, it's not where you wanted to go, council member, but that's my response to that, as well as that they're not necessarily getting 100% of what they want, and they are going to see a significant delay because of the process that they have to go through to get it approved.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I have a question for Mr. Tahan, if I could.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, no, yeah, it'll be Mr. Wood, then you, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Tahan, since this person, independent of the agreement, started work without a valid permit, will... permit, will the people, since, and obviously, this is a licensed, what level contractor? A, B, C?
We've their license A contractor.
A contractor, so, you know, ignorance certainly isn't, is never an excuse, but certainly in this case, they're an informed contractor, so they should know what permits are required. And so, will this be a, will there be a fine levied on this person because they started work without a permit and they had to get a stop work? What, what sanctions do we, in a situation like this, would we expect to levy? Or we just, we never do levy, levy if we just move on? I'm just trying to figure out what, when does something so egregious that someone would get a fine?
Yes, sir, that's a valid, very valid question, Mr. Moss. The building code does have some limitations on what we're permitted to do as far as levying fines and fees against the contractor for their work. Scott Steen, our permits and inspection administrator, did note to me today that if a contractor is found to have three documented cases of violating the building code and as far as obtaining a building permit, we do have the opportunity to summon them to court directly utilizing the building code and levying any fees or fines and that, utilizing the building code. We typically have not done that. Again, our goal is compliance, but when it is egregious, we do have a tool available to us.
I'm not recommending or suggesting any direction, I'm just trying to understand what the standard is. In closing, my personal view is that we should require the person, and we legally can, to remove all the stuff that was put in place, and he should have to come back after it's restored and walk through the process. He should not be rewarded in any way. In fact, he should be sanctioned through the financial costs he incurs for a flagrant violation of a document that a professional organization that took $2 million of our money was aware of and should be held accountable to, and there is no excuse for what took place, and if we have any respect for the laws and the regulations and the agreements that we paid $2 million for, we would give this person no quarter on the battlefield, and we would require him to remove everything, restore it, and then come back and ask. This is not something we should overlook. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood, and then Mr. Tower.
Thanks, and so, just a couple of technical questions here. Other than the location, which obviously makes this a different, different situation, it looks to me it's, it's like a retaining wall and a foundation, maybe a little bit of electrical, I can't tell from the picture, and that, that's pretty much it.
Yes, sir, and the catering area, as well as the turf installation, the synthetic turf installation.
Synthetic turf, which in and of itself wouldn't require a permit.
The way that they, the way that they're proposing to install it to meet manufacturer's specification, it would require at least a land disturbance permit or alteration to their existing site plan.
So, and some of this work was done prior to the stop work order?
That is correct.
So, what do you do about the work that's already been done? How is that going to be inspected?
Typically, what we would do is, if there's anything that we can't have access to, we will require them to open it so that the inspector can get access to it to assure that it meets the code requirements, or have a, potentially a third-party inspector-
Or party engineer or something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
I just want to make a comment. Bobby, you may want to stay here, because I think we may get to a question. I just want to say that I think Mr. Moss has very accurately described the conduct of Cavalier Associates. I believe they have committed a flagrant violation of not, and I'm not even talking about the permitting, I'm talking about the easement agreement. I want to, could you put the slide up, please, that shows the improvements, the one-
Hey, guys, is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay, we're having, you-
I'm sorry. Could you put this slide up that's got the green space on it? It's not numbered on, oh, it's, no, it's number five on the original handout. I'm not, I'm sorry, I didn't note it on there.
We'll get it pulled up for you, sir. I believe you want the, one that shows the green space easement with the Cavalier, sir?
Yes, in green, yeah, that one. I just want to make sure we all understand what we're looking at here. This, this building extends into the green space. If you look at the upper right corner of the green space there, the brown represents, I assume, where the catering area is, and a portion of it, that is, the portion west of the front line of the hotel, is probably not in the green space, but the rest of that is in the green space, is that right?
That's correct.
Clearly in the green space, no question about it. And of course, the artificial turf also is. Now, the artificial turf, I mean, you can make an issue that this is a, not a material change. I wouldn't, if I, if I were the Cavalier Associates, I wouldn't make that assumption, but there's no way in the world you can assume that the structure that has been built that is above the ground level, notwithstanding what it looks like or what the owner thinks is attractive or useful. There's no question that it's, we have the right to, to say whether or not we will permit that with, and that has nothing to do with any of this permitting, stop work, all of that, that's a whole, a whole nother issue. This is the issue of ignoring an agreement that was, I assume, very carefully negotiated, carefully drafted, of which the owners knew or should have known that they were risking a violation by building anything that was as visible above ground in the, in that area. And I, I'm, I'm really appalled by their action in doing that. I don't know what to do about it, frankly. I haven't come to a conclusion, but I, I agree with Mr. Moss, one, that it was a flagrant violation of the agreement, and I also agree that the recommendations are simply recommending things that he, that the owners would have to do anyway. They are suffering zero, I mean, I'm, okay, I'm supposed to be sympathetic that it's going to take them a long time to get their disturbance permit and all those, and I might be if I weren't still kind of fuming about their ignoring the easement agreement. I'm, I have not come to a conclusion about what we ought to do about this, I will say that, but I want, I want you guys to know that I don't agree that this is the right thing to do. I'm not satisfied with the recommendation that's been put forth, I understand it, and as I said, my real objection is not that it, how you handle an ordinary, run-of-the-mill dispute with a contractor that goes off and does something, and you try to get him back online and there, we work for compliance. I'm talking about a separate agreement for which the city paid $2 million plus and should be held, and is for, in perpetuity. We have an obligation, I think, to not just our constituents who live here, but for all of the people to protect that. And let me add one other thing. It is not, it is not decisive that the State Historical Society said that this does not threaten the integrity of the, of its classification of this building. That's a factor, but it's certainly not deciding. That's not the deciding. We have the right to decide whether or not we think this is a material change that we, and that we object or do not object to it, and I think we ought to be very careful about making that anytime, particularly in this first, case of first impression, which unfortunately has come to us with, with this clear indication that the owners have, do not have respect for this agreement that they should have. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else comment? Ms. Wilson?
Is there any discussion of putting something in place for whenever something comes up for them to go to first, like, like staff and maybe some of the Historic Preservation Commission to, to run it by to get approval and then move forward?
As far as something-
With the Cavalier?
We do, so the process that was utilized for the, that Mr. Reed presented is the process that we have in place for any easements that we hold in general to get through that approval process. The Cavalier itself went through, was the first one to go through that type of review. I think they had Mark and his staff, and the rest of the city staff, had been working on that since 2018 to come up with that review process. So, that is the process that they had put down on paper as far as to do the review to try to go through the approval, but again, that is a recommendation to the manager as far as what staff's review of the easement language stated. I don't know if that answers your questions.
So, it's a recommendation to go through this committee?
The committee did review it already, and the recommendation was approval with the conditions that were-
Okay, so the committee has reviewed it and recommended conditions?
Yes.
And there is someone from the Historic Preservation Commission on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and then Ms. Wooton.
I just want to respond, because I talked with Mr. Henley about this before, the committee. The city council is the people that approve the agreement, not the city manager, the council approved it, and I never saw us get a comment or what the criteria of a commission that would decide when that could be changed. And I only say that is, I don't feel compelled, as my good counsel, and her tower doesn't either, that the recommendation of the group, which didn't consider the full tangible, intangible, and moral obligations, didn't get considered, and in this particular case, they become the more important concerns and values and factors than technical compliance, because it comes down to, and I'm sure that's why I asked that question, did people look at the fundamental thing that the agreement was flagrantly violated? Not like they came through and hadn't done anything and they went through a process, but in fact, they ignored their legal obligations, moved on without any consideration, then after they got caught, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm speeding," you know, "Give me a warning." They, you know, that's, that, so I would suggest that looking forward, as lessons learned from this experience, that the commission's criteria and people at the table who have a, maybe a different perspective on some of these things, more than they're just a technical issue, need to be a part of that process so that the recommendation comes here more holistically. I'm not faulting what the people did, because that's the scope, how they've looked at it, very technical, but this isn't a technical issue that's before us, not at all. This is a, to me, Mr. Mayor, a, what respect we have for ourselves, what respect we have for the re-agreement that we hold and paid money for, and what actions do we take when someone totally disrespects that agreement and flagrantly violates it? That's the question that's before this body, not the technical issues that were described. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley, Ms. Wooton, and then Mr. Wood.
Well, just to clarify, the source of the funding originally for this easement, it was the open space money. It came from the designated open space fund coming from meal tax. It was not a general fund designation, and I think that is probably a part of what this is all about, is the open space and whether or not that was going to in any way interfere with it.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wooton, and then Mr. Wood.
Okay. I have a question on slide nine. I'm just trying to understand, on slide nine, when you talk about March 18th permit for catering area only issued in area, in error, and that staff communications in permitting, there was a software issue. Could you go over that again? What, so I'm trying to understand the catering area only permit, did that permit in any way authorize this contractor to, to do any of this previous work?
So, the permit for the catering area included the, thank you, there it is, that included the finishing the brick wall and doing some additional work to run electrical or other utilities to the catering area itself. So, again, that was issued in error because of other, of the way that we had unlocked the property in order to allow for the interior work to get final inspections. We had to unlock the property, and when we reapplied that same hold, it did not reapply it in a way to stop the future permits to be issued. So, when it came up to the city staff's typical review period, which is 30 days, it was 30 days on the news on this one, it came up and then staff reviewed it, saw that they had all the necessary technical requirements for the permit, and unfortunately, got a permit in error because they did not get the final approval for the green space easement alterations.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I, I wanted to just bring something up for clarity purposes, because when we, when, I believe Mr. Moss asked who the contractor was, you used the phrase Scott Taylor, but when I took a look at the actual application, it was a, it was an entity that, that has a similar name, but I just want to make sure people understand, we're not talking about the former congressman here, because it's, a lot of negative things are being said, and I just want to make sure, because that, that name, that it wasn't that particular Scott Taylor, and in fact, it was an entity with a different name than the one that you said.
I saw that in here. The contractor that was work, that has been contacting us is Taylor Construction, Taylor Construction.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that, since it was-
Right, it is a different Scott Taylor, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody, yeah, Mr. Jones.
Who signed the application for the permit?
For the, on the applicant's side?
Yeah, who was the, who signed on behalf of the owners of the property?
That was, that is the contractor, Scott Taylor. Again, it is a different Scott Taylor.
So, the contractor signed for the, application for the permit?
Correct.
Not the owner?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Stiles, we do hate to put you on the spot, but you are, are kind of a default. I think what we have here is a situation where, you know, the council, you know, feels some type of, you know, you know, with the contractor's actions and everything, we have a recommendation coming forward from the manager to move forward with conditions, but is there, you know, but once again, I think the disposition of what happens, you know, with, you know, the contractor and, you know, to allow, not to set a precedent that, you know, there was something on, is there any recommendation you might have? Hate to put you on the spot.
I don't have any recommendation separate and apart from that of the city manager. He consulted, a member of my office was on the committee that developed the recommendation for the manager. The council has identified concerns associated with what was and was not considered in connection with that recommendation, and the council has every right to express its view regarding whether or not that recommendation should be accepted, but that's the only recommendation that I can offer, sir.
Yes, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, I love to get any additional input as it relates to, is there other elements that council wants staff to do as it relates for process or any definitive response to get back? You know, the, per the easement, it was delegated to the city manager to make a decision on this, you know, but I am fine, as I serve at council's pleasure, in taking into account the feedback that I'm hearing. I'm hearing that there is definitely some concern in how the developer approached this in terms of respect for the agreement that was signed with this body and the entity that contracted with the city, you know, so I'm open to any kind of feedback, I'm open to delaying and doing more staff work and coming back if that's desired by the body. I'm open to not approving this if the body wants to go in that direction.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, I think it's important- Well, I think it's important that we are consistent with the manner in which we deal with similar situations. If in fact, the council feels that we need to take more action when permits are not obtained properly and we are too lenient by trying to work things out, then I think it should be an overall policy that we are looking at. So if, in fact, we're going to do that, I really think we need to look at the overall policy for how we deal with issues when we find that similar situations occur with contractors not getting all the permits that they need and so forth. So I think it should be an overall issue if in fact, we feel that there's too much leniency.
Yeah, Mr. Moss.
Well, I would agree with Ms. Henley on regards to permits, but the fundamental issue here has nothing to do with permits. And I went through that question and I've shared it with some of the colleagues here with the city attorney, that the, if he had never gotten a permit or had gotten all the permits, the permits would not have entitled the person to start work even with a permit because the agreement is the fundamental constraint on Cavalier associates and they are accountable for their contractor's action. So permit or no permit, it's not material to the question before us. The question before us is violation of the agreement. That's what's before us. So these are questions I ask, and I don't know if I'm allowed to give these answers in public, but I'm going to. But we have the sole discretion not to grant what he has a permit for or didn't have a permit for. That's in this body. And if we tell the, we're not approving it, we have the sole right and discretion to tell him to remove it and restore it to its like conditions. The permit is immaterial, grants the applicant or the owners no material standing relative to being held to the agreement. This is not a new agreement. I remember when this was hammered out, I didn't vote for it, but I remember all the money that went into it and spent on it. And so we should put the permit to the backseat. That's not what's on the table. It is the agreement. And if it's this body's decision, then they have encroached. And that flagrant violations, that we're not going to make people respect agreements that they sign voluntarily and get money in exchange for, what does anything that we negotiate mean? What does it mean? Now, someone might say, well, then if we're not going to make them take them out, then what compensation are we going to get? Which is like called a consent decree, not admitting wrongdoing, but I'm paying you a check. That's often the federal way. So what is it in order to continue to move and for us to look a different way? And then that money, whatever we get, would go back into the fund that helped pay for it, which was our open space fund, Mr. Mayor. But to look back and say, there's, we either don't make them take it out or there isn't a substantial financial penalty, penalty, inducement to get us to agree. So basically, we are renegotiating the agreement because now we're going to get money back. Then we really haven't done our due diligence to the people who gave us the $2 million and we bought the easement. So I don't think it's, I personally would have them take it out, but I wouldn't be objecting to saying, oh, well, that might be a bridge too far for some. But to not get a return, a financial return, back on our $2 million in terms of cash, to grant some, something that's purely in our discretion, so we have the right to ask. I've checked that out with the city attorney. We have the right to ask, in return for what you want, this is what we have to get. And I don't think that's unfair for the flagrant violation. This on the federal level, there'd be a sense, you'd be, you'd be signing a check. You'd be putting money out of your pocket and it would go back to open space where the money came from. But I don't think they should get a get out of jail free card and there's no consequences for what was truly a flagrant and continued flagrant violation of an agreement they signed and that we paid money for and we ratified. And I think that's what the city manager is asking. The permitting process, he runs that, he'll come back and tell us. I'm willing to live that he's looking at that. But this agreement was our agreement. We voted on this agreement. It's our, we're representing the public. The public has been basically stiff-armed in effect. That's us too and the staff as well. And I think there ought to be a financial consequence or we ought to have to remove it.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a recommendation that we poll council on one of two options. The first is to agree to the city manager's recommendation or ask him to go back to the drawing board to come up with some viable options. And I think one of the things, I think Mrs. Henley learned, alluded to this as a learning curve about what we can do to avoid this in the future. So Madam Clerk, the question is going to be, should we accept the manager's recommendations or instruct him to go back to the drawing board?
We can't vote him this.
No, but a poll.
I don't think we do that either. I think we've gotten in trouble for that recently by taking a poll. I think the thing is that we should just defer this to another time when we're able to make site visits. I want to go down there and look at myself. I don't think we have enough information at this time and I certainly don't think we should be making another poll, even though we think they are not a vote. We've gotten in trouble over that just recently. So I don't, I'm not in favor of that. I think we should just defer it. And if we're going to take a vote, it should be on a formal agenda.
Okay, what's your advice in council on that, Mr. Stiles?
You can't take a formal vote. You can provide direction to the staff. And in providing that direction to the staff, you can discuss where each member stands, which, you know, each member would have the right to say, this is where I stand on it. And obviously, that is not far afield from a, from a straw poll. But you can't take a formal action, you can't, you can't take a binding action in this workshop because it's not a formal meeting. But if the members of the body want to express their position and make that known to the manager, then that certainly can be done.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that we just ask, you ask the city manager as the chair of this body, what direction is he taking away from what he's heard? And then you might be asked, is there any objection? And that would allow us to allay both just Mrs. Henley's concerns and address your desire to provide direction. Does he think he got some out of all that discussion? That's just a recommendation.
You know, basically, I think it's better to go back to the drawing board and, you know, come up with some.
Mr. Mayor, the sense I got from the body is that staff work isn't complete, that we need to come back and provide additional alternatives for council to consider.
Okay, is that fair with everybody? Okay, hence the direction. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. DeHany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kathy Warren from the SGA office is going to provide counsel to briefing on the Historic Cavalier Shores Community Request for a one-year extension of their residential parking permit program.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up item from your, I believe it was the March 2nd council meeting, where there was a request in front of you to extend the Cavalier Shores Pilot Parking Program for an additional year. Today, I'm going to walk you through the recent request by Historic Cavalier Shores Community to extend their three-hour parking program for another year. As this slide suggests...
I want to make a suggestion about all these technical difficulties. Mr. Manager, can we buy our assistant a new computer? A one that's up to date and so we don't have these problems going forward? So can we get some consensus on that?
Maybe we can go back to transparencies, Aaron. We'll get microfiche back. Yeah, we got a copy if we can just go ahead and move forward.
Okay, great. Well, as the first slide suggests, we'll go through the background and timeline of the program, the permits and enforcement timeline for the adjacent Cavalier Resort construction and staff's recommendation. So first, the request, again, the Historic Cavalier Shores land side requests a one-year extension for the three-hour restricted parking zone due to Cavalier Resort ongoing construction. On this slide, you will see in the red boundary, this is the entire Historic Cavalier Shores neighborhood. What we are discussing today is the boundary in yellow, that's the land side. To provide some background and the timeline, in the summer of 2018, next slide, please. The Cavalier Shores neighborhood was experiencing an influx of construction workers parking in their neighborhood from the adjacent construction site. In 2019, the community requested a restricted three-hour parking district, which was approved by city council as a pilot program. Last year, due to ongoing construction at the Cavalier Resort site, they requested and/or approved for a year extension to the program. Next. Here you'll see the permits and citations issued over the last two years. We have had property owner permits in 2019 at 222. 2020 permits, we had issued 201. In 2019, we had 337 citations. And then in 2020, we had 375 citations. Most of these citations are issued for overstay of the three-hour timeframe. It is also important to note, and I think this was a previous question, 75% of these citations were issued to regular cars or vehicles as opposed to construction vehicles, trucks, or vans. Excuse me?
Could you repeat that?
Would you repeat that last comment?
Absolutely. So there was a question about the number of citations, if they were issued to trucks, vans, construction vehicles, or cars. 75% of those were issued to cars.
Cars.
Regular vehicles.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
I assume by car, you're not suggesting that those cars were all visitors or residents as opposed to construction workers?
They were not permitted to be in that community longer than three hours.
That's my question, Kathy. My question is, there's, you were distinguishing between construction vehicles and vans and cars. And my fear is that people will take that as an implication that the people in cars might have been tourists or residents from another part of the city. But there's no evidence that those cars weren't full of construction workers coming to work, right?
And I will clarify that, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you.
So many of these construction workers are just arriving in regular vehicles. So for the Cavalier Resort construction timeline, and we felt it was important to show the various aspects of this, in March of 2021, the Marriott Courtyard is expected to be complete. May of 2021, Cavalier crosswalks and roadway, the roadway in front of the Marriott and Cavalier is expected to be complete. In March of 2023, the Embassy Suites is expected to be complete. And then in May of 2023, the cul-de-sac will finally end construction. So on to our final slide. Staff is recommending that we extend the pilot program through April of 2023 until the construction of the Embassy Suites is complete. I did include several pictures in your Friday packet. We did not intend to show those today, but happy to do that if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? And that would be Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Kathy. And I just, I understand what you said about the vehicles. 75% of the vehicles were passenger vehicles. And my concern has always been people who are just going to the beach, you know, parking on a public street. And when I do the math on this, it looks like about 50% of, at least in 2019, of the citations were, and actually more, I'm looking at 2019, they were all in the summertime. And it looks like it's about the same or even greater in the summertime. So how do we know that these are actually the construction? There's a construction impact on it and not just traditional tourists? Like day trippers from Kempsville or wherever?
Right. So when we went through, we went through every, the way we enforce the parking out here is through license plate readers. So we went through every single license plate, then attached it to the type of vehicle it was. And although we, we can't necessarily say that they weren't beachgoers, we were able to make certain assumptions that they were construction workers based, by tying that also to what we were seeing in the field and what our contractor was reporting back to us that they were seeing.
So do you have that data? Because that data wasn't presented here.
We do have that and we can provide that for you this week.
Because I think that that's pretty important if we're, because again, they're public streets and I understand if they're impacted by a construction project, but they are public streets and people traditionally have parked on these streets to go to the beach for decades. So I think we need that information before we move forward. Thank you.
And Mr. Moss.
When this item first came back, and it seems like it was a lot longer ago than it actually has been. But one of the issues was, as the parking garage, which was to service both the Marriott and the Embassy Suites, was completed, that the parking garage was going to be a source where then the employees and vendors were going to be able to, as a matter of fact, were going to be offered parking versus what they were then being offered was paid parking at the Cavalier Hotel itself on the back side. Now, and this may, this is anecdotal, I haven't verified it entirely, but I understand that the top, because obviously whoever approves the plans knows what part of the parking they need for the operation of the Marriott versus what they need to support the Embassy Suites under construction. But my understanding is at least the top two floors of that capacity have, are the capacity that has been allocated to service the Embassy Suites when it's open. But it's not open, it's under construction. Was there, and I know before there was discussion with the people on developing the property, was there any discussion in this process as to, to what extent the construction site and the builders on that are making that parking garage excess capacity that's in that garage available to the people that work at the Embassy Suites?
We have not had any discussion during this process this year.
I think to Mr. Wood's issue, which I think is a good one, we want to make sure that we're being fair to everyone. I think since that was a discussion item back at that time, when the construction garage was still under construction, if I remember correctly, well, it's finished, I believe, and approved for use, I would like to have that data point and I would like to see us maybe reach out and see what that is just to make sure, to Mr. Wood's point, that we are maximizing the opportunity for access. But we've also made sure we've taken measures that the employees are parking in the garage. And if they're going to charge, that's good to know because that means they won't use it. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Wilson and then Mr. Tower.
Kathy, thank you for all your hard work, as always. I always felt that three hours wasn't long enough for someone to park their car, get their kids out, take the coolers, get the chairs, and walk to the beach and have a good time before all of a sudden it's, got to be back and get the kids packed up. And it just seems for beach usage, too short of a time. It should have been at least four hours, that's my opinion. The other thing I wanted to, was if you're going to go back and do some work looking into this, I mean, I was told that there's a thousand parking spots on the Cavalier properties and that there was plenty of room for the workers to park. So if you can go back and check with that. And it's true, they shouldn't be charged, as Mr. Moss said. If you could look into that, because if there's ample parking and when you look at where the Embassy Suites is, it's, you know, further south and it's a lot more inconvenient to be parking at Cavalier Shores.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Tower.
I hesitate to comment because I don't know this for sure. But again, anecdotally, I believe that employees of the Cavalier and as the... and as the construction of the Marriott is finished, of course, it now, we now have all the employees of the original Cavalier, plus the employees of the new Cavalier. I believe those employees are offered parking at a, perhaps a discounted rate, but it is still a paid parking. They're not provided free parking. And that, that, you know, as in most employee parking around the beach, if the employees are not going to pay if they possibly can, they're going to find a place to park where they don't have to pay. Their pay rate is not enough to afford to pay for parking even at a discounted or what high-end travelers at least would view as a discounted rate. It's still pretty stiff for terms of hospitality workers pay. And of course, the, once the Embassy Suites is finished, you know, you're going to have even more of those employees.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Very informational. Thank you. All righty, next on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the planning department staff will provide council with a preview of the planning items that are scheduled to be on the agenda at your April 6th and April 20th council meeting.
Kevin Kemp and Carolyn Smith are both presenting virtually. So Mr. Kemp, we have unmuted you. If you'll just pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. As City Manager mentioned, Carolyn and I will be briefing you quickly on the items you will be considering on your April 6th and April 20th agenda. The April 6th agenda is all short-term rentals, and the April 20th has five other planning items on it. I will start with the April 6th agenda. As I mentioned, there are all short-term rentals. There are 11 items on this agenda. All these items were heard by Planning Commission at either the February 10th or the March 10th meetings. The applications represent three council districts. There were eight applications in the Beach District, two in Centerville, and one in Bayside. Seven of the 11 applications were recommended for approval by both staff and Planning Commission. Three of the applications were recommended for approval by staff and denial by Planning Commission. And one application was recommended for denial by both staff and Planning Commission. The first application is in the Centerville District. It is a town home in the Infinity subdivision, which is near the Lynn Haven Parkway and Centerville Parkway intersection. It is Zoned 824. This is an application where staff recommended approval and Planning Commission recommended denial. The home was constructed in 2016. It has three bedrooms. Three parking spaces are provided off the street in the driveway. One slightly overhangs into the right-of-way but does not block any vehicular traffic. The staff received no letters of support or opposition, but there was one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing. The Planning Commission reviewed this application and felt that it is not in an area where short-term rentals are common. As you can see by the map, it is the, there's only one other registered and voted to deny this application. The second application is also in the Centerville District. It is a single-family home in the Salem Lakes neighborhood. It sits on a 12,000-square-foot parcel. Both staff and Planning Commission recommended approval. The home was constructed in 1985 and contains three bedrooms. Three parking spaces are provided off the street. The driveway currently holds space for two. However, the applicant plans on adding a third space. There was discussion at the Planning Commission as to what the better location of that third space was. However, I believe the applicant plans on adding it, as shown on the drawing, to the left of the driveway. The staff received two letters of support and zero of opposition. The property is not in an area where STRs are commonly found. As you can see by the map, our records show that the property is not registered or being rented at this time. The third application is in the Bayside District. It is one unit of a duplex located in the Chesapeake Bay Beach neighborhood. The applicant owns both units, but this request is only for one. Both planning staff and Planning Commission recommend approval, and this was heard on the consent agenda. The unit itself, a fire in 2019 destroyed much of it. The original home, which was built in 1950, was redone. There was much discussion about what a nice job the applicant did in rebuilding the home and how it has greatly improved the aesthetic of the neighborhood. The unit itself has two bedrooms. Two parking spaces are provided in the driveway. They do overhang into the right-of-way. Staff deemed that acceptable. The applicant has also agreed to bring the driveway apron up to public work standards within 90 days of approval, and this is conditioned. The staff received five letters of support, none of opposition. This is in an area of the city where short-term rentals are common. They're not one of the proposed overlays. As you can see on the map, there's 25 registered short-term rentals, one CUP for other properties under review, and a couple that have been denied. Records show that the property is advertised, but it is not currently being rented. It is also not registered as the applicant is awaiting approval. Applications 4A and 4B are for duplex in the Beach District. The 7,000-square-foot lot is located in the 500 block of 13th Street. It is a neighborhood with a mixture of residential and commercial uses. It is in close proximity to the beach, but is not in one of the proposed overlay districts. Staff recommended approval of this application. However, Planning Commission by a vote of six to four, recommended denial. Some of the Planning Commissioners did not feel it fit in well with the existing neighborhood. The duplex was constructed in 1965. Each of the two units have two bedrooms. All four of the required parking spaces are in the driveway. It would require a three-foot extension, as you can see, to the right of the driveway. Staff received one letter of support, no opposition. It is in an area where short-term rental use is extremely common, as you can see by this map. Zoning has received no complaints on the property. The property is not currently registered or being rented. Item number five is for a single-family home located in the Beach District. The 2,700-square-foot lot is located in the old Beach neighborhood, which again is not in one of the proposed overlay districts. Staff recommended approval on the consent agenda as staff and Planning Commission. And it was on the consent agenda. Planning Commission felt that because this property was east of Baltic Avenue, it was an area where short-term rental use is appropriate. The two-bedroom home was constructed in 1939. There is currently no parking on site. However, two spaces will be added. Additionally, there's three conditions added to this application regarding the gravel in the back, which will dissuade cars from entering from the substandard alley to the rear of the property. Staff received one letter of opposition. The opposition stated that short-term rentals create an unfair burden on the neighborhood and impact negatively the quality of life. There are many short-term rentals in this neighborhood and on this street. The property is not currently advertised or registered, and zoning has received no complaints on the property. The sixth item is for a single-family home in the Beach District. This 5,000-square-foot lot is located in the Croatan neighborhood, which is not in one of the proposed overlays. Staff recommended approval of this item by a vote of nine to one. Planning Commission recommended denial. The four-bedroom home was constructed in 1984. The parking on the site is all accommodated in the driveway in front of the home. Staff received 10 letters of support regarding this application and six letters of opposition. Additionally, staff received a petition of support with 245 signatures and a petition of opposition with 50 signatures. So as you can see, this application brought much interest. The concerns with the opposition were the transient nature of short-term rentals, the negative behaviors it causes, increases traffic, noise, trash, and troubles with enforcement. The property is not currently advertised, pending the approval of an application. It is registered, and there have been no zoning complaints. The seventh item is for a condominium unit in the Beach District. It is in the Playa Arana condominium complex, which contains 42 units. The property is located in the proposed OR overlay. Both staff and Planning Commission recommended approval of the item on the consent agenda. The unit itself has two bedrooms, and both parking spaces are provided in designated spaces on site. There have been no complaints on the property. There are a number of units that are for rent in this property. So our system host compliance was not able to identify the specific unit as to whether it is advertised or being currently used. The eighth item is in the same complex. So rather than repeat myself, it is basically the same application, two bedrooms, two parking spaces provided. This unit, however, was found on host compliance. Oddly enough, it is currently advertised and registered. However, it is not being rented, awaiting approval. Again, there have been no zoning complaints found on this item. Item number nine is for a single-family home in the Beach District. The 5,250-square-foot property is located in the Lakewood neighborhood, which is not part of a proposed overlay district. Staff and Planning Commission recommended approval, Planning Commission by an eight-to-one vote. The home was built in 1984 and contains three bedrooms. Three parking spaces are provided in the driveway in front of the dwelling. The dwelling currently has room for two spaces. However, concrete will be added to support a third space. There was discussion where on the site that would be as to not eliminating the shrubs and tree to the left. However, that is where the applicant plans on placing parking space. This is an area of the city where short-term use is common, though it is not in an overlay, as I mentioned. The property currently has a long-term renter. The owner states that they bought the property with the intent to move. However, their military orders changed. Eventually, they would like to move to Virginia Beach, but they would like the option for short-term rentals in the interim. The property is not currently advertised or registered, and zoning has no complaint. The 10th item is for a townhouse in the Beach District. The 3,800-square-foot property is located in the Shadow Lawn neighborhood, which is not in one of the proposed overlays. Both staff and Planning Commission recommend denial of this application. The three-bedroom townhome was built in 1975. Three parking spaces are required, as you can see on this diagram. Two of the spaces are provided in front of the dwelling. The applicant proposed a third one to be parallel parked behind those other two spaces. Although in the past, we have entertained such parking solutions, this one is extremely substandard in the size required for a parallel space, which is 22 feet. Additionally, you can see that grass median strip, which would also prohibit a vehicle from maneuvering in and out. So the fear is that they would block the neighboring parking. Thus, the parking plan was not approved. There are several short-term rentals in the neighborhood. It's been a mixture of approvals and denials. The property is not registered or rented currently. The owner lives in Florida. They bought the unit to be closer to their granddaughter and daughter, and they want to rent the unit in the summer when they don't live up here. The 11th and last item on this agenda is for a condo in the Beach District. This is a property you've seen many applications for before. It is located directly across the street from the Ninth Street Municipal Garage. Both staff and Planning Commission recommended approval. The unit is one-bedroom, and there is one parking space designated on site. Staff received no opposition. The property is advertised, but it has not been rented since the applicant learned of the requirement to get a conditional use permit. Staff has had no complaints. So those are the items being considered on April 6th. And now Carolyn will discuss the April 20th agenda. Thank you.
Council, if there's any questions for Mr. Kemp?
Yeah, as long as he's on. Any questions right now for Mr. Kemp? Okay, we're good to go.
Ms. Smith, if you would just pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon. We have five planning items scheduled for you on April 20th. And this does include the amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals. And staff is preparing a separate briefing that we will provide to you on April 13th. So we won't get into the details of the recommendations to you from the Planning Commission this afternoon. So the first application is a request for a street closure in the North End. Specifically, the request is to close half of this portion of Holly Road adjacent to 401 49th Street. The applicant proposes to close approximately 3,000 square feet of right-of-way and incorporate it into their property. For decades, the driveway that serves only this single-family dwelling and also a small portion of the home's porch have been located within the right-of-way. The applicant, who somewhat recently bought this property, would like to close this portion of Holly Road and purchase the property from the city of Virginia Beach. As there is a public sewer line in this portion of the right-of-way, a condition is recommended that would require the dedication of a public utilities easement. In addition, a condition is recommended that would require the dedication of a public drainage easement for future use with stormwater management needs that might arise. Staff did receive one letter of concern, and there was also one letter of, excuse me, one speaker in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. Both the letter, as well as the speaker noted the desire to maintain pedestrian ingress/egress. As only half of the right-of-way will be closed, pedestrian access is still maintained. Planning Commission therefore did vote nine to zero to recommend approval. This next request is actually twofold. It's an application for a conditional use permit for bulk storage yard as well as a modification to the 2005 proffers for the Vector Park development. This property is on the south side of London Bridge Road, and it's basically on the approach to NAS Oceana. Specifically, the modification includes four new one-story office warehouse buildings totaling 24,000 square feet, and two areas designated for bulk storage of primarily building materials. As these improvements were not contemplated in 2005, both the conditional use permit and the modification to the proffers are required. A deviation to the category six screening for the storage yard is being requested, but only along the boundaries of the storage yard that are internal to the site and not visible from the rights-of-way. This property is within the greater-than-75 noise zone, which is the highest or the loudest noise zone. It's also within accident potential zone one. And it is encumbered by a Navy restrictive easement. So this, these are the areas that we really like to see storage and warehouse uses. The activities proposed are consistent with the terms of the Navy restrictive easement, and we do have a letter from the Navy indicating this, and it is provided in the staff report. No known opposition to this application exists, and the Planning Commission did place this on their consent agenda. This next application, application number three, is a modification to the 2017 conditional use permit for religious use for a church that has yet to be constructed along London Bridge Road. To orient you, it's on the south side of London Bridge Road, adjacent, or I should say, a little bit adjacent, or I should say, a little bit west of Hunt Club Farm and across the street from Hunt Club Farm. Revisions to the parking lot layout, a slight increase in the building's footprint, as well as desired changes to the two thousand and seventeen stormwater management strategy all require the modification to the conditional use permit. The redesign of the proposed stormwater management really resulted in this request to eliminate the condition from the two thousand and seventeen approval that requires the parking lot to be constructed at the current grade of the adjoining property. The applicant met with staff several times, and several alternatives were discussed. The applicant also held a virtual public hearing, or I should say, a public meeting with up to twenty-six residents to explain that the revised design will require up to three or three or four feet of fill on the rear of the property in order for the site to discharge stormwater into the system within the London Bridge right-of-way. To mitigate for this fill, the parking lot is proposed to be shifted away from the residences, and two landscape buffers are proposed that include the installation of a three-foot-high berm with plant material and also a six-foot-tall privacy fence, also with plant material. The applicant has also agreed to a limitation on the height of parking lot lighting to four feet, and all other lighting is limited to fourteen feet in height. There was no opposition at the planning commission public hearing, and staff has not received any letters of concern or opposition. There was one citizen in support at the planning commission public hearing, but they did not speak as the planning commission placed this on their consent agenda. Item number four is a request for a conditional use permit for an automotive service station at the southeast corner of Shore Drive and Pleasure House Road. This site was home to a gas station for several decades and really is prime for redevelopment. The applicant is requesting to redevelop the site with a four thousand square foot seven-eleven convenience store, as well as fueling stations. It's the fueling stations that do require the conditional use permit. The application was presented to the Bayfront Advisory Commission, and similar to comments that were provided by staff to the applicant, the Bayfront Advisory Commission recommended changes to the design, as well as building materials to address recommendations found in the Shore Drive Design Guidelines, specifically that the building should have a coastal-style design. So based on changes made by the applicant, the Bayfront Advisory Commission is supportive of this application. A twelve-foot-wide right-of-way dedication is proposed along Pleasure House Road, and this will include a new five-foot-wide sidewalk, so pedestrian connectivity will be improved. Two of the four ingress egress points along the rights-of-way will be closed, thereby decreasing the potential for vehicular and pedestrian conflicts. And there are no residentially-zoned properties or uses adjacent to this site. There is no known opposition, and this is an item that was also on the planning commission's consent agenda. And the fifth item, as I mentioned, will be the recommendations coming to you from the planning commission on amendments to the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals, and staff will be prepared to give you that briefing on April thirteenth. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Wood?
And this is more of a, not a question for Ms. Smith, but more of a comment to the manager on the short-term rentals. I, I, I think that we need to have, and Mr. Moss has mentioned this as well to me, but I, but I think we need to have a little bit more of a robust discussion on this, rather than just a staff briefing and then, then a, then a meeting on it. I, I would think, in my, ideally for me, I think it would be a four, four-step process, a staff briefing, a council workshop, where we try to come up with some sort of consensus or idea on where we're going on this, a public hearing and then a vote. But what I'd like to do prior to having the public hearing, or at least prior, prior to having the public hearing, is have an idea of where we're going to go with this. Because when, when I read the comments, people are objecting to being included in an overlay when they're not in the overlay. And, and so I think a lot of people don't know what, what is going on. So I think we need to be extremely clear about what, what we plan to do prior to, to having a, having a public hearing or a vote, or we're going to hear people talk about something that, that isn't, that doesn't pertain to this. So I, I really think that, that, that we need to follow at least at, at a minimum a four-step process, and I'll leave it to the rest of the council if, if they agree, agree with it.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson?
I think that's a good idea, and I think we really should do it after the budget. Because we're going to be having all those budget hearings, and I think a lot of people are going to be coming to speak on this, too. If there's any way we could push this till after we deal with the budget.
Yeah, I do concur with that. Mr. Dehaney, if it'd be okay if we can go ahead forward with the four-step process? We all agree after the budget would be the more opportune time? Okay, Ms. Enley?
Well, I had an issue about another question, but on the short-term rentals, I have to look at Louis. We did that once the whole summer of, what, two thousand and seventeen, that we had the meetings and thought we had come to an agreement and so forth. So, yeah, we can do it again. But I do think we need to spend time on it.
Okay.
I do have a question about another item.
Oh, go right ahead.
The, the issue of the parking lot on London Bridge Road, we had specifically indicated that it was to be constructed at current grade of the adjacent properties because of some very difficult conditions that we had with an property on Holland Road. I am going to want, and if others want to participate, you certainly can. I am going to ask for a specific briefing for me, doesn't have to be at a council meeting, that specifically goes through what you're doing with this one to assure that it will not cause the problems that the other one had. I want to know the distance between the affected residences, and I want to know, I want, I, I promised myself I would not make that mistake twice, and I want to be assured that I'm not. And so I'm going to ask for very specific detailed explanation of what you're doing to make certain we're not causing that same problem again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Enley. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Dehaney, I think the time has come with great anticipation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Budget Director Kevin Chadelair is going to brief you on the details of the city manager's proposed FY twenty-one and twenty-two budget that is being submitted to you here today for your further review and consideration. Kevin will also discuss the proposed budget briefing framework for your upcoming meetings in order for us to get a, to get council's feedback on how it would like to be briefed.
Welcome.
Thank you. If I can be heard, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. I need to take this opportunity to thank my staff and introduce them. It's been a while. I haven't been able to introduce my administrators within the department. So Caitlin James and Regina Born Delgado are the two administrators within my department. It wouldn't have been possible to put together the whole framework of this operating budget if it had not been for all their hard work and staff's hard work. So just like to acknowledge them on the front end. It's before city council today is the executive summary, the city's operating budget, as well as the city's capital improvement, six-year capital improvement program. In addition to that, a printed copy of the City of Virginia Beach's Public School Systems proposed FY twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. So it's really hard to believe it's been a year since I was last providing this presentation to city council, except last year at this time, it was being done in a camera. I think the weight of, in the reality of the COVID-nineteen pandemic had just set in. As I was presenting the operating budget, I knew it was dead on arrival as just a few days before that, they had literally canceled the NCAA tournament, and the NBA canceled their season. And so that night, after presenting it, worked with David Bradley to put together an alternative budget for city council's consideration that reduced sixty-seven million dollars out of estimated revenues, made a, made reductions to services, and that's what city council took into the reconciliation process. City council then took that conservative budget or the flexibility that that budget provided, and then made additional adjustments, further putting the city in a good position to address the unknowns of the COVID-nineteen pandemic throughout the year. City council established reserves on projects, implemented the continuation of the hiring freeze, and it's really put us in a good position. As you'll see, I'm getting ready to present the FY twenty-one, twenty-two city manager's proposed operating budget, and it's because of those actions that we're actually going to be, it's my pleasure to present that today. Over the course of last year, city council has taken several actions to give back to the community. At the beginning of the pandemic, with the establishment of the meals tax holiday, delaying due dates of delinquent taxes and penalties. Without these actions, it's not quite known. I don't know if it'll ever be known what the true qualitative impact is, or, excuse me, quantitative impact is for the individuals that receive these services, but we can be assured that it certainly would have been worse for a lot of people out there had it not been for city council's actions over the course of the last year. New to the budget process this year, we began engaging and interacting with city council earlier in the budget process. And we feel like we got a good direction from city council as to what to take into consideration the development of the twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. So as I'm working through the presentation, you'll see that we have a budget that does not recommend or have tax increases associated with it. We looked at alternatives to the E R U increase that was originally planned for twenty-two. We were able to maintain existing current services. We were able to put some additional resources towards some areas with growing demands and services that city council had identified as priority areas. In terms of compensation, the proposed budget includes a three percent proposed increase to city staff salaries. It also reserves funding and places, sets funding aside for potential impacts and implementation or parts of implementation of the market salary survey to be completed next year. And it also focuses and places some resources towards the purposes of recruit, recruiting and retaining hard-to-fill positions throughout the city. So a quick, high-level review of the revenues and revenue highlights. The city manager's FY twenty-one to twenty-two proposed operating budget recommends a reduction of real estate tax rate of one cent. City manager's proposed budget recommends delaying the stormwater E R U increase that was previously approved or planned to go into effect in FY twenty-two of three-and-a-half cents increase. It's going to remain at forty-nine point three cents a day. The proposed budget does not include, or does not recommend making adjustments to the waste management fee. That's projector, to remain at the twenty-five dollars per month. Currently, SIPSA is taking consideration and looking at possible increases to the the tonnage tipping fee going up by four dollars, so it'd go from fifty-seven to sixty-one dollars per ton. Even though it's being considered, it's not final, and so therefore, the city manager did not feel that we should include a rate adjustment in the proposed budget to address that for what's the unknown at this point in time. If that does go up over the course of a year, and the Waste Management Fund does not have the ability to address or absorb those cost increases, we would certainly come back to city council, and we would make a request to appropriate Waste Management Fund balance to cover those services throughout the year. Some other considerations and inclusions in the operating budget is the recommended extension of the hotel tax, flat tax within the tip fund. It was previously set to sunset, or is set to sunset in December thirtieth. Excuse me, yes, December thirtieth of next fiscal year, and the city manager's budget recommends the extension of that through the end of the fiscal year. I'll speak more to that a little bit later in the presentation. In addition, the budget includes a recommended, or the establishment of short-term rental fee of two hundred dollars per year for a short-term rental program. This would cover costs associated with expanding services being provided with that to better implement the program. Again, I'll speak to that in a later slide in the presentation. Back to the proposed tax relief efforts, the city manager's budget includes the, by providing a one-cent real estate tax reduction, it's anticipated to result in a tax avoidance or a cost avoidance to taxpayers across the city of six point two million dollars. This is both for residents and commercial businesses. The city's portion of that reduction is about three point three million dollar loss in revenue. And the school share of that reduction is two point nine million dollars per the school funding formula. This is anticipated to have an impact or a tax avoidance savings on, on a family living in a median-assessed home value of about twenty-six dollars a year. The delaying of the three-and-a-half-cent E R U increase resulted in a loss of projected revenue of three point one million dollars in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. The replacement revenue source for that is a one-time use of fund balance within the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for the purposes of putting towards one-time costs, such as capital replacement and maintenance efforts within the C I P. Thank you. So also, we just need to take into consideration and look at the long-term needs of the Stormwater C I P section. I'm taking into account the reduction and delay of this stormwater E R U increase over the last couple of years. We just need to be mindful on the means-of-financing program in the Stormwater C I P to ensure that the fund will have adequate revenue to pay for that debt service associated with those bonds. Something that we're mindful of, and we take into account each year in the development of the operating budget, is the anticipated tax burden that is being placed on residents. This can be found on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the executive summary in more detail. But there's some assumptions made in this, such as a family living in median-assessed valued home, owning two cars, and their spending habits are in line with the B L S spending patterns. So overall, year over year, we're projecting that to be an average impact of about a hundred and eighteen dollars per year on the taxpayer, or nine dollars a month. Also, something we'd like to do is be mindful of where City of Virginia Beach's tax rates compare with the regions. As you can see here in this table, Virginia Beach is the lowest in the region in all these categories, except for the automobile and the cigarette tax. Second lowest in the cigarette tax, and it's fourth lowest in the automobile. So in looking a little bit more granular at the revenues, overall, we're anticipating revenues to be two point two billion dollars in FY twenty-two. The table here provides a breakdown comparison of the adopted twenty-one revenues with the projected twenty-two estimates for these various revenue sources. So overall, revenues are projected to grow six point one percent when comparing the adopted budget to the proposed twenty-two revenue estimates. This could, this seems a bit high. However, keep in mind, earlier when I was talking about the reduction of the sixty-seven million dollars in adopting the current year's operating budget, we were really conservative in those estimates, as we didn't know where the bottom of this pandemic or the loss, what the loss of revenue would really look like. So the good news is revenues are performing better than we originally had anticipated, and as a result, we're more comfortable in our revenue estimates going forward in FY twenty-two. Some of the more notable revenues with higher percentage growth comparing these two year over year are personal property, general sales, business license, or B pole, the restaurant, and hotel. So to provide an example, or a closer look at what I'm talking about, whenever we were conservative in our revenue estimates, and that's resulting in the higher year-over-year growth, this table here provides a comparison of the twenty-two projected revenues compared with the twenty actual revenues. And you can see here that the, the growth between these revenues is a little bit more in line with what the historical rate's been, what we're used to seeing. The largest of these is general sales, seven point three percent. However, keep in mind, that's over a two-year period, so FY twenty, the current year twenty-one, and the twenty-two proposed amount. General sales is actually performing better. As a matter of fact, we just received the sales that occurred from January. Yes, it's on a two-month lag, and year-over-year comparing those months, general sales grew about fourteen percent comparing those months year-over-year. This pie chart here on this slide represents the two point two billion-dollar operating budget and the allocation of those revenues and the appropriations across various categories. You can see the largest portion of the pie is schools with forty-seven, near forty-seven percent. The second-largest percentage of the pie is the infrastructure-related departments, such as planning, public works, public utilities, thirteen point five, and public safety is the third-largest portion of the pie, eleven point seven percent. This slide here provides a little bit more granular level look down of the expenditure, the budgeted amounts by expenditure category. This provides a breakdown of both city and school. So you can see that the city's portion is about one point one seven billion dollars. So you can see that the cities portion is about one point one, seven billion dollars and the schools about one point oh four billion dollars. So of the overall growth of six point one percent, the cities year to year growth comparison is about four point two percent with the schools portion representing about eight point four percent. The significant growth in the schools is a result of the appropriation and then budgeting for the use of grant funding in next year's operating budget that wasn't included in the current year's operating budget. As a matter of fact, and looking at the grant fund that grows about fifty million dollars year to year. So that's resulting primarily in the operating expenditure growth being near thirteen percent there in that category. Looking at some expenditure highlights and focus areas, the twenty two operating budget includes the establishment of two crews to address stormwater needs throughout the city, establishment of a BMP crew to address MS four permit mandates, and the establishment of pipe cleaning crew to address pipe cleaning needs to act proactively clean pipes throughout the city on a one every, once every five year rotation and maintain and review and monitor the pipes with a CCTV system once every fifteen years. So even though the operating budget includes the request for these FTE, something that was very clear throughout the budget process was that the city manager is always looking for a way to achieve and provide services, the most cost effective means to these citizens. So we're continuing to look at this and work with this purchasing and public works. And if it's determined that we can do this more efficiently and cheaper through the use of contracted services, we would certainly be approaching city council with a future request to redirect these resources towards that purpose if it's found to be that, if that's found to be the case. Other initiatives is a FTE was added to the planning department to review stormwater CIP plans, complex CIP plans as a result of the standards, standard changes that just recently took place. In the stormwater CIP, a few new initiatives, increased funding for the canal maintenance and roadside ditch program. In addition to that, the establishment of stormwater project administration CIP project to improve program management and project delivery of the stormwater CIP section. Other initiatives includes short term rental program. New in FY twenty two is the addition of two staff members to the planning department to primarily work on weekend and nighttime work for enforcement of short term rental program. Additional funding has been included for contracted manpower services to cover the gap in where the service deliveries can't be covered with existing full time staff and also with the implementation of a software program to help better track the implementation of the short term rental program. Covering these additional increases is the fee that I previously had spoken to about the two hundred dollar per year short term rental fee. That's estimated generate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And it'll not only support these new initiatives, but it'll also support the existing two FTEs within the planning department and the contracted manpower dollars that they have in place will be fully covered by that fee.
Mayor's mayor and members of council, it's also important to note that this short term rentals also provides for a call center as well. So this will give an, an alternative for our citizens to call twenty four seven to make their complaints about specific short term rental properties, should they have any?
Other initiatives included is an FTE that's being added to the finance department to further implement and further the goals of the disparity study. This is primarily related to the review of construction contracts and the those new initiatives and requirements put in place to award those contracts. Keeping the concentration on the Hillard Hines and the implementation of those recommendations, the twenty two operating budget includes additional funding for counseling services that are currently being provided through the VB Strong Center through a grant that was obtained to provide those services. The granny grant is nearing an end of its time and the funds are nearly exhausted. So the twenty two operating budget has the inclusion of recommending bringing those within the general fund to provide those services in house and the sir, or through a contractual arrangement within the city use of general fund dollars. In addition to that, additional staff has been included or added to human resources for the purpose of centralizing HR functions and efforts. And additional two point nine million dollars programmed in the CIP in FY twenty two to work on facility security enhancements throughout the city. So this will be utilized to identify assets, key assets and infrastructure in need of security upgrades and potential changes throughout city facilities. Some other initiatives include the resort area initiatives within FY twenty two. There's one point five million dollars of enhanced entertainment funding included within the tip fund. In addition to that, there's two new crews established within public works, a beach ops crew as well as a street maintenance crew. These crews are for the purpose of providing the more one on one responsive needs of a high foot traffic area such as the resort area. These, the additional, the additional positions and one point five million dollars are to be covered through the extension of the hotel tax through the next fiscal year. That's the, the tip fund will support these and that through next year at least at a minimum, depending on whether that's continued further into the future. If that's a direction of council, then we might be able to look at utilizing that to support these in the long term. However, if looking at the health of the tip fund next year about this time, we might need to make additional consideration or recommendation to reduce services elsewhere without, if the revenues don't rebound in time. In FY twenty two, we're anticipating the opening of the Burton Station fire and EMS station in the spring. This results in the need to staff it up with thirty firefighters and seven EMS positions. Those are included in the operating budget with a start date of January twenty one, twenty two. Previously, I noted that we were able to put some additional resources towards addressing the hard to fill positions. That's being done in FY twenty through two through the establishment of a police cadet program. Purposes program is to identify individuals and work with individuals who are interested in becoming police officers, however, not yet quite of age to become an actual police officer. We're also looking to work with ECCS to redirect some resources within their operating budget to develop a recruitment retention program for their hard to fill positions, nine one one call takers, which have proved to be difficult in recent years to fill. And also keeping in mind that there's the possibility of the market salary survey and the findings of that in the future, we're hopeful that potentially any findings from that might be able to address some of the other citywide hard to fill positions such as IT or IT or the, the other positions. Some other initiatives within the housing department, housing's looking to establish a pilot program to be proactive in the redevelopment of some neighborhoods and where those needs. Currently, there's a gap that exists between eligibility of applicants and the use of state and federal programs to implement these initiatives. So we're looking to put a pilot program in place to use general fund resources for this purpose and hopefully get, be proactive in protecting our most important asset in the city and that's our property values. The library program is implementing a new initiative in twenty two to waive library fines and fees for youth accounts. They did in depth analysis and their findings were that a, any fee over ten dollars acts as a prohibitor to youth accounts and ultimately ends up reducing youth activities and participation in the private library programs as a result. So they're going to work over the next year to waive those and try to see what the impact is in the local community. At the request of the Sandbridge Civic League, the twenty two budget will be establishing a Sandbridge recycling program. This will be, includes the addition of an FTE to be supported through the Sandbridge SSD. And the twenty two budget includes full funding for the expansion and of police department body warrant camera program to ensure all full, all filled police officer positions have access to a body warrant camera. Previously, I'd noted compensation, twenty two budget includes compensation adjustments. It also maintains the existing policies the city council has in place related to public safety workforce development, sheriff pay parity and supervisor midpoint adjustments. The twenty two budget has programmed a anticipated three percent increase in employer contribution to health insurance while maintaining a no increase to employees premiums in the FY twenty two fiscal year. This results in the general fund of about one point five million dollars is the cost of that. The employers portion of the healthcare cost increase is to be covered from the health insurance fund, which has a current fund balance of around seventy million dollars. The twenty two budget also includes a three million dollar reserve in anticipation of findings from the market salary survey to potentially implement portions of that. And as I previously noted, city's operating budget includes a three percent compensation increase and the schools operating budget includes a four and a half percent increase and a point five percent step increase, so a combined five percent for schools. In terms of overall growth in positions, it might seem like some of the previous slides were adding a lot of FTEs to the twenty two budget. However, overall FTE growth is really only going to be a net growth of fifty four point two six. These are all city positions as schools did not add any FTEs in twenty two. But keep in mind that thirty seven of those FTEs were related to the Burton Station in twenty one for the stormwater establishment of the stormwater crews that previously noted. There were vacancies, reductions in other departments within the city. And so the additional increase in positions came as a result of reducing elsewhere. So based on the guidance from council, the city manager's twenty two proposed budget is trying to preserve what city council established in the current year and that's maintaining flexibility to address the unknowns. It's important to note that the twenty two budget does not utilize vacancy savings as a means to balance the operating budget and the initiatives I previously outlined. In addition to that, there's been a twenty million dollar emergent need reservation placed on the general fund fund balance. This is not an appropriate budget to reserve, but just a reservation of the fund balance is what we're recommending. This will still keep the general fund fund balance within city council guidelines of eight to twelve percent and the general funds projected to be ten point four percent at the end of next fiscal year. In addition to that, it's important to note that the city managers and the city's operating budget does not anticipate or plan or rely on the use of federal stimulus funding that might be forthcoming through future legislation or whenever it decisions are made on what the amount to be provided to the city of Virginia Beach is going to finally be. So quickly going through the CIP and highlighting that before moving on to questions. The total CIP, you can see here by the pie chart, the one through year, one through six of the CIP is about one point eight billion dollars with stormwater section representing the largest portion of pie at twenty three percent. Schools are now twenty percent and the second largest in that. Schools have actually made a significant increase within their recommended CIP sections. Last year, they represented fifteen percent of this pie and now they're twenty percent. And I'll speak more to that in just a moment. This provides a means of financing breakdown of the proposed CIP six year plan with year one being four hundred and twenty three million and years two through six, which are planning for planning purposes and not appropriated, but just used in the out years of the CIP of one point four billion. You can see there that it represents the one point eight six billion. So getting into some of the sections in the CIP highlights, more specifically to some of the projects, previously I'd noted the canal management as well as the stormwater management program within the stormwater section. But also a two point three million dollar plus up has been added to the city's master drainage study program or project within the stormwater section. Within schools, hundred and twenty seven million dollars been added over the six year period for these three projects, Princess Anne High School replacement, as well as BF Williams replacement and Bayside High School replacement. So the amounts reflected there next to those are actually the additional amounts added to each of those projects in the six year CIP, not necessarily the full cost of those projects. For example, the Princess Anne High School replacement project's actually a hundred and sixty three million dollar project. This thirty two million dollars just fully funds it. Looking at economic and tourism development, some notable projects, a six million dollars being added for the Virginia Beach Innovation Park. This will add, connect the roadway infrastructure throughout the entirety of the park. In addition to that, a permanent canopy is being, looking to be funded and installed at Thirty First Street stage. And looking at the roadway section, by far the most complex section of the CIP, some notable, but not certainly not all of the projects that are fully funded in the CIP is the Pleasure House Road and the NMO seven B. Some projects that are notable as receiving additional state and federal support include the Holland Phase One, Phase Two projects, Laskin Road Phase Three, as well as the Northampton Boulevard Diamond Springs Rare Project. And previously, city council had been briefed on several roadway projects that were going to be negatively impacted as a result of some V dot changes in the changing of the V dot revenue to support those projects. I'm happy to inform council that that's no longer the case. The construction schedules are not going to be negatively impacted for the four projects. The state was able to resolve the Virginia Beach First Colonial Road project as well as the NMO Phase Seven A, I believe. Excuse me, yeah, Sandbridge Seven A project. Projects that we're going to use general fund fund balance in the meantime to support until V dot funding comes in at a later point in time includes Elbow Two B and Shore Drive Three at a later point in time. Whenever V dot fun, funding comes in for that, we'll certainly work to redirect the general fund, um, fund balance used towards those projects to elsewhere within the CIP. Looking at the IT section, some notable projects include a, the establishment of ECCS or the emergency call center backup site, two point eight million dollars for that project. Some increased funding to enhance the maintenance and security of corporate data or basically to enhance cybersecurity efforts within the city. This includes a year one plus up of one point eight million dollars and thirteen point five million dollars over the six year period. Project to replace courtroom technology, some of the existing technology within the courthouse and the courtrooms is from the original construction in nineteen ninety four. Funding's been established over the six year or in CIP of one point one five million for that. A project to replace the voter electronic poll books. So the technology or the poll books are nearing the end of their useful life period and need, in need of replacement. In addition to that, some libraries are also in need of modernization and technological modernization efforts. So this is the first presentation of several presentations to be provided city council regarding the FY twenty two operating budget. So included here on the slide twenty eight is a proposed format, trying to work with city council's direction of not wanting PowerPoint overload, but also having meaningful information to keep them well engaged and informed of what the operating budget's going to include. So the format would be to have public safety departments with some significant growth or changes occurring in twenty two present at the April sixth. Public Works and Stormwater, Public Works with Stormwater and Waste Management to present April thirteenth. The schools to come provide a presentation to city council, April twentieth, as well as a briefing on the, about the resort initiatives and short term rental program and what the needs are. And then on April twenty seventh, a focused presentation on the Hillard Hines initiatives and what the twenty two budget will be able to further in implementing those recommendations. And sprinkled out through, throughout that, all CIP sections would be briefed to city council with the focus being of what's maintaining, what are significant changes city council needs to be focused on and aware of, as well as what are some new initiatives or new projects that have been added to the CIP. Some other notable key dates, April twenty first, public hearing. April twenty seventh, the second public hearing. May fourth, city council reconciliation workshop. And then May eleventh would be the date the city council would set to vote on the operating budget ahead of the May fifteenth deadline to have schools operating budget approved. So with that, I know it was a lot of information, but with that being said, I'll certainly stand by for questions or discussion.
Any questions, comments?
City real estate assessor briefed us on the new tax base. I don't have the report handy, but I do know he quoted the figure six million, three hundred and thirty three thousand and some change. And I noticed in your slide upfront, it only said six point two million. Is that an adjustment realizing that when we lower the money that doesn't come from the TIF, doesn't come to the general fund, but there's a variance there? Since that affects the whole budget and that magnifies over a lot of money, I'd just like to know why the difference.
Yes, sir. That councilman Moss, that is, that is certainly part of it is the TIF base has to be reduced out from the amount of that is allocated and dedicated out. In addition to that, his report also, that is just based on the total assessment and doing the revenue projections for. In doing the revenue projections for that, there are certain things that we have to take into account, such as the collection rate, as well as prior year collections that come in. So, there is a little bit of leakage that occurs, or it doesn't happen in the first year because we only typically have, on average, about a 98% collection rate of the current year's real estate tax levy.
If you wouldn't mind, a nice cheat sheet would be nice that shows that decomposition because people do watch our show occasionally, and they look at those numbers, and I'd just like to be able to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, and then Mr. Rouse.
Well, I, I know that there has been some clamor to cut down on the briefings in budget. I'm not one of those. I want all the information I can get. I know at budget time, historically, it's been our opportunity to see somebody from all of the departments and all of the budget units and to know what's going on, and so, okay, we won't do that. But I hope they will still prepare the document that they would have given to us if they were coming, and I would like to receive those, just to make certain I don't miss some salient points. When we're looking at all of this heavy stuff that we are expected to review, I'm afraid I'll miss something. And I certainly want the budget units to have the opportunity to pull out those things that they think are very important and are new, or that they want us to know about, and I would still like to get that information.
Yes, ma'am. I've got that in note here. We will develop that and include it in a future Friday packet for you.
Okay, Mr. Rouse and then Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. One of the things I'm more looking into when we get to reconciliation, I noticed there is a 3% increase for our salary increase for our city staff. Can you give me more information on what does a 4% salary increase look like, and how could we get to that? I'd like to see that for our, our city staff. Have you looked at that?
A, a good rule of thumb for the general fund, every 1% increase results in about a $4 million increase. So, the 3% set aside is a $12 million reserve right now that's set aside for a 3% compensation increase. So, to make it a 4%, it would result in roughly about another $4 million need to be identified.
And this...
Yes, sir. I certainly will.
Yes, and, and this budget hasn't made account for the funds possibly coming from the American Rescue Plan.
That's correct.
So, that could be another avenue. We can look to do some things in there.
Yes, sir.
All right. My next question and interest is, is can we provide more, or tax relief in the form of personal property tax for our, for our city, for our citizens? I think we all understand that how, how far this pandemic has, has really hurt us, or hurt our, hurt our citizens, and so finding more tax relief in the forms of that for everybody, not, for everybody throughout our city is something that I'm interested in. So, if we can see what that will like.
The city manager did have us run through scenarios such as that, so I certainly do have that information that I can, that I can provide you.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thanks, and I just wanted to clarify something, just a housekeeping item. The, on, on your slide 29, you indicated other key dates, April 21st, April 27th, public hearings, and you said convention center, they're in fact, remote. They won't, they won't be here.
Yes, so the VBTV, you are correct. Yes, that is a good point of clarification, in that these are going to be virtual meetings. The public hearing ads that are be going, to be going out for this will include that information, as well as the link for residents to be able to click, to be able to join and attend those virtually. Yes. Good, good point of clarification.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
I'd like to agree with Ms. Henley that the budget hearing briefings are really valuable to me, and it also gives us a chance to see the people from all the different departments. And sometimes we might have some other questions that aren't just budget-oriented. And there's also been a lot of changeover in staff. We've got a lot of new people, and it'd be good to see, you know, who these people are. So, I really support just to have the briefings, so that we can get our questions and see all these, that's going on. It's just the most important thing we do the whole year is the budget. And I just got one little other question. Somebody asked me to find out if the Patriotic Festival was in the budget.
So, the Patriotic Festival is supported within the TIP fund, and to my knowledge, that line item has not been removed from the, but I will certainly confirm that and, and respond to you accordingly.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else at this point, Ms. Henley?
We usually have some kind of compilation and a little document that we can be passing out to the public. Have we created anything of that nature for this budget?
Yes, ma'am. I do have a one-page fact sheet that includes operating budget as well as the CIP. I can certainly send that to members of council, so you could utilize that as a one-page source to be able to share information.
I, I hope to be having a forum later this week, so I, I need it. But we don't have the little fold-out that we've been doing.
No, ma'am. We don't have the budget fact card. I will email it to you whenever I get back to my office. I'll, I'll send it to council tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Tower.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate, you're going to send it to all of us, right, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, you know, my comment, Ms. Wilson, I mean, touches the string. I'm, I'm back on the library board now as a liaison just recently, and my first meeting with the director, I mean, she had a ton of things they really need. She understands, she understands budgets and all that, but I really think it's very interesting stuff to hear about where the libraries are and what their needs are. I was wondering if it's possible to do, and I also like the idea of seeing some of the people that we don't get to see. I wonder if we could do something like video clips of, with those, so people could talk to them, some kind of compromise, maybe. I, I know we're trying to cut down on the time, but at least those you could view at your, at a time that suited council members, they could, and, and their level of interest in them, because I'd like to see some of those myself.
Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can go wherever you all want us to go. You know, if council wants us to bring in the departments one by one, we can do that. If council wants us to go with the abbreviated approach that we mentioned, we could do that and also have the departments give the presentation they otherwise would have given in, in a TV studio, and then put it on YouTube and send links to you all, for you all to review at your, at your discretion.
I think that might be, does anybody, everybody, that might be the good option? That way, we can watch them at our leisure, as you said. If you can do that.
We don't get to answer the questions, so we can hear each other's discussion that way.
Yes.
I like the, getting the briefs and watching them when, you know, if I want to watch them at 3:00 in the morning, that's when I can watch them. But when we meet, and I don't think we should cut back on what, when we meet, but when we meet, then we're having the fiscal policy discussions and, and the questions, and that's the part how we get to, so when we get to reconciliation, maybe reconciliation is done when we're done by discussion, because what has historically, and it didn't happen last year, so we didn't have the briefs, and that didn't end as well as it should have, maybe because we weren't talking, but maybe, but we found a way to do it by phone and get to the endpoint. That's not the most elegant way to get there, but we got there, and I appreciate the staff spark helping us make that all work, and everybody here got together and made it work. That was good. But the discussion, and I think that is what the historical process consumed all the time on the briefs, got questions, but there wasn't much time for council interaction. It was mostly, I think, bilateral discussions with the briefer and people taking their notes. But I would like, and I'm sure everybody else would like, to get this electronically, because then you can, you know, do your little pens and clouds and make your notes and calculate your questions as you go along, because I think this, this is a very rich document. You're going to be complimented on it, but there is a, a lot of questions, and I'm sure everybody would like to get electronic copy. But I'm, I, I just personally, but obviously y'all have them, then we can decide to come or not, but I personally found, sitting there, consuming 20-minute per monologue, not a very good use of our decision-making time.
And before we get to Mr. Wood, to Mr. Moss's point, you know, once again, realize that we are carving out time special now for, you know, council discussion, even at the end of the workshops, council discussion, and then during formal sessions. You know, we've got council comments, liaison reports, and, and that will continue. Mr. Wood.
Yeah, I would echo what, what Ms. Henley and Ms. Wilson and Mr. Tower have said. Yeah, I understand it's, it's easier to watch these things online, but, but you don't get the, the back and forth and, and specific questions, and, you know, to Mr. Tower's point, if there's something new in the libraries we don't know about, that's not a budget question. That's, that's just a specific thing. I, I think they're very valuable. We haven't done them in quite some time. We've got a lot of folks on council that have never experienced them, and, and I think that although it does take time, I think it's, it's not a bad idea to, to stack, stack the, at least all the major departments and, you know, with, with the constrained time, amount of time. And there, there may be no questions, there may be some questions, but, but if a director of a specific department comes in and we happen to have an issue with that department, then, then, you know, that would be the perfect time to ask. So, so I'd suggest we come up with some, some method that's maybe even a hybrid approach that allows us to do that.
I was going to say, just maybe a hybrid, that even when they come in for, you know, maybe do the videos, and if there's a question, they come in and they can give it a abbreviated presentation, you know, very similar like we do at the Hampton Roads Planning Commission. You know, short presentation and then open for discussion.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is that you want us to have the departments come and give a brief presentation between five to seven minutes on the impacts of their budget.
Would that be adequate, at least as a guideline, but, but then be open for, you know, question, Q and A after? And then maybe they can, maybe if they can, if they have a more detailed one, get it to us ahead of time that we can pre-read. Okay, all right. Any other questions? I'll tell you what, that, you know, very, very good stuff. Very, very good stuff. Okay, at this point, guess what? Council discussions, anything? Yeah, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently got a couple emails from some constituents in the Red Mill area of the city, who are, have some concerns about the increased traffic from Nemo Parkway that, that's opened up all the way to Princess Anne, between Nemo Parkway and General, Nemo Parkway and London Bridge off of General Booth. Their concerns about traffic and the multiple accidents that has happened on that road, right, for General Booth, and so they, Mr. Manager, is, want to inquire about a traffic study, a, as well as the, the sound, because of also the, the Red Mill Landing that's opened up, the Red Mill Commons that's opened up, or that's increasingly expanding, and then obviously, Strawbridge Marketplace has been there for quite some time. But those constituents in the Red Mill area would like the city to look at possibly a traffic study with the increased traffic on General Booth between Nemo and London Bridge.
Okay, you know, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Ms. Henley.
Yes, I don't think we can go another meeting and totally ignore the bill that was just signed by the governor that totally changes our government in the local area. And I'm going to request that we have a public legal briefing about the bills, their implications, what our steps are going to have to be. The thing, one of the things that really bothers me tremendously is that there was absolutely no public discussion in this city about this bill. And although I know Mr. Rouse indicated that his constituents are very familiar with it, my constituents are not. And I think it's very important that the public be aware of these changes and how they're going to be implemented. I think we're going to have to start talking about policies that will be affecting the way we act. I think there will probably be some budget implications. But I couldn't help but look at this newspaper today, and above the fold, we've got the Cavalier, and we spent an hour on that, and then there's another half a page on page four, but there is not one single line in here that says the governor signed this bill that changes Virginia Beach's local government completely. Our public is totally out of it. And, and the way this was, I don't care what you, if, how your opinion is on the issue, but I can't think that anybody thinks that this was the proper process. It, it was snuck through the legislature, and you might tell me that I used an improper word. Well, it was an improper process. We don't do something like that. And this was why I, for one, was not in favor of a referendum last November, because we recognized, I recognized, that there was no way that the public could thoroughly discuss that issue last summer during a pandemic, and during the time that we were involved in a federal case involving our voting system. And I look back over those briefings that we had about the federal case, offering us various settlements, but we couldn't go out and talk to the public about it. You know, we were, we were bound, and the public just does not know any of this. And I think it's our responsibility now that it has to be out there for the public to discuss and to understand, and we are going to have to start determining policies for implementing this total change. When I think that going forward, I'm only going to be answerable to the people in the Princess Anne District, that bothers me, because I'm going to be sitting here voting on all of the issues for all of the city, but the rest of the city won't have any opportunity to vote for or against me in the future. And I think once the people realize that, they're going to look at us differently, and they're going to look at the way they present things here differently, and even though technically it doesn't take effect until January of next year, the fact remains that no longer will seven of us be voted on by the entire city. And that's a big, big change. Our people have lost the right to vote for six people. And I, I just think that, that this has to be presented to the public. We have to start, we have to stop not talking about it. It has to be presented in a fashion that people can express their opinion to those who created this, and I hope they understand that we didn't. But I don't think we can, we can sit here and avoid the elephant in the room any longer. And so, I'm going to ask that we do have a public, a public briefing about the legalities in these bills, so that the public can start understanding and can know just what changes have occurred that they didn't realize were occurring.
Thank you.
I just have two items, if I could.
Yes, please, John.
One, I want to say first to Mr. Dehaney that Deborah Brynston's doing a great job in terms of providing us a new level of knowledge about what's going on. That's a welcome change, so please extend that to her. Thank you, and your leadership in that regard. For those of you who've dealt a little deeper, the first 12 months is really going to be pandemic relief and the first 12-month allocation. It isn't until the second 12-month allocation, as you read the bill, that money for infrastructure will be available. So, we're really looking at, as we looked and billed next year's budget, much more than this year's budget. Now, I don't know what all the guidelines are about reimbursement, but I know you'll leverage those, but for people who've been following it, the infrastructure money is in the second 12-month allocation of that bill. But the other one, I was had a, last night I had a Zoom meeting with some folks from Ocean Park Civic League, and one, it was on something else, but they asked a question about the status of the sand replenishment on the bayfront. Thanks to all the good information we gave, I gave them a rundown of where we were. They haven't been forgotten. The money's out there. We're working with Dembel Shoals. But I do know that one of your folks, I think, is talking to the civic leagues out there this- this week. Just want to pass on to them to make sure they can give them a little bit probably more detail than I was able to share on that Zoom meeting. But sometimes we think everybody knows what we know, and their memories fade, but that is actively on the plate, the sand replenishment for the oceanfront beaches. The money's there. We're just trying to take advantage of Thimble Shoals, which I think that's ahead of schedule, actually, that dredging. So anyway, that's just to share something that Mr. Woods and Mr. Jones might want to be aware of. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, Ms. Henley and then Ms. Wooton, and then Mr. Tower.
I have another issue and sort of a question. You know, we had also talked about having a bond referendum on the stormwater last fall. But again, we recognize last fall was not the time for a major referendum. So now we're talking about a stormwater referendum for this fall. And I know that we have seen preliminary list of possible projects. And I was just wondering, in talking with the public, are we okay to present that recommended or suggested list, or is that not something we should be talking about at this point? Just at what point are we going to really start engaging the public on that discussion and those projects? And can we start talking about them? Because I do definitely want to start talking in the Princess Anne District about these things, and I don't want to step on, step ahead of what you want us to do. But we do have that referendum that we were also going to have last November, but we realized we couldn't do that last November either. So we're talking about the November referendum on the stormwater budget.
If I could just comment on that, I think one of the intent of having a referendum, there's going to be a public education portion of this that's going to be critical. So I really think it may be in our best interest if we at least get it out there and, you know, at least initiate the discussion, you know, to justify the need, the rationale, and what we're trying to do here and what we're trying to accomplish. So I think at some time within the near future, I know we're pressed with the budget, but once again, this is also a high priority. I think we should probably get out there sooner rather than later.
I will just mention that the Open Space Committee had an absolutely wonderful presentation yesterday about the Bow Creek project. I've not seen that in that fashion, and I would love for the council to see that, or as many people as could. That's going to be such a wonderful project. I'm assuming there are all of these really good things out there that we haven't had time to keep up with this year because we've spent so much time on COVID. But that was a great presentation, and I hope others can see it.
Thank you. Ms. Wooton and then Mr. Tower.
Yes, really quickly, I just would like to bring the council's attention. And I'm working on an ordinance to prepare a, or request a task force to follow up on the Citizens Review Panel. As many of you remember, this was a request and an ask for the mayor's African-American Roundtable. And I think a task force would be beneficial particularly in the areas that I heard set forth during our retreat, the areas of the impact on the police, a budget, and what that would encompass for this particular organization, as well as more information on subpoena power and investigatory power. I think a task force would bring a wealth of knowledge and information to help us as we move forward in this process, and I think is sorely needed. And so I'll send more information out to you all. Certainly would like your opinion on it and your input as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first express my appreciation to Kevin and all the other people presenters today. A lot of work went into that and much appreciated. And I echo Mr. Moss's compliments to our new legislative liaison. I always, when I open my email, she's the first one I go to because she's always got good information for us. On the beaches, I just have to say one more time about, talk about Croatan. I think Mr. Moss misspoke at one point and talked about the oceanfront beaches when he meant Bayside. But I'm, we do have an oceanfront beach at Croatan, and the city manager and I have corresponded about it. And I just would ask Mr. Manager that you do some outreach also with the folks in Croatan, the Civic League, and other interested people there. Photographs, they sent me this weekend of their beach were pretty stunning. There's really no beach. It's a drop-off taller than a person at the end of Croatan Road, anyway. So they have a lot of concerns about when and where, and I'm not sure, even if you just can tell them what, everybody gets the same message. That's what I'm looking for. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, you know, just in finale here, over the weekend, the governor and I had a couple texts exchanges, and one of the things, he said he was pleased with the COVID numbers that we've been seeing, and he said he's going to have some good news on Tuesday. And in case you haven't heard, so far, we are effective on April 1st. We're going to increase indoors from 10 to 50, outdoors from, what is it, 25 to 100, indoor entertainment to 500 or 30% of capacity, outdoor to 30%. And prior to, that was only 1,000. But what's really important is recreational sports is 500 outdoor and 100 indoor. Because once again, as we start seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with the COVID, once again, we got to do it responsibly. But it's important that people know that we're coming back. And we're talking about, you know, this might help out with the sand soccer. This would also help out with the East Coast tournament. But once again, I think this is light at the end of the tunnel. And Ron, was there any indication, Mr. Williams, on the restaurants at all about capacity there?
I didn't see anything in the release there.
Okay. But once again, I think it's an important start as we start to approach April, that we're going to be looking at the opening of the season. And I think in discussing some of the folks with the rack on some calls, that, you know, there's some positive anticipation now out there, especially with the number of vaccinations we've been getting. You know, all the indicators are pointing in a positive direction. So with that being said, I want to thank everybody. And I'll tell you what, I really think it's important that we have these council discussions at our meetings because it does give the opportunity, you know, for people to say what's on their mind and offer ideas. Thank you all. We are adjourned.